A proclamation. Whereas Harvey Edward Miller was born November 4th, 1929, in Rocky Hollow, a freedom colony near Georgetown. He was born to Frank and Elnora Miller, and Harvey accepted Jesus as his Lord and Savior at a young age. And whereas following his marriage in 1948, the Miller family moved to San Marcos in 1966. Miller served a distinguished career at Gary Job Corps Center, and his wife, Arabelle Miller, became the first Black nurse at the Hayes County Health Department. And whereas Mr. Miller established the Bridge Builders Organization to improve race relations in the late 1960s and transformed the Dunbar School into a park and recreation center for all children. And whereas Harvey Miller helped revitalize the Juneteenth Celebration commemorating the freeing of slaves in 1865 and helping people appreciate the significant contributions of Black citizens. And whereas Deacon Harvey Miller is recognized for his support for the Greater Bethel Baptist Church as the founder of the Dunbar Heritage Association and the recipient of the 2008 Cities Spirit of San Marcos Award and many other awards. And whereas Deacon Harvey Miller, aged 90, went to be with the Lord on September 1st of 2020, passing peacefully surrounded by family and friends. And whereas the Dunbar Heritage Association honors his legacy, celebrating his 94th birthday with the Third Annual Harvey Miller Day of Service on the first Saturday in November to pay homage to this trailblazer, civil rights hero, community builder, youth worker, and family man known as "The Good Lookin' Fella" in recognition of his 54 years of service to the San Marcos community. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 1st of 2025 as Harvey Miller Day of Service and call upon the citizens of San Marcos to recognize the contributions of this esteemed citizen and honor him by serving the community on the Fifth Annual Harvey Miller Day of Service. It is the fifth one, isn't it? We'll get that fixed. All right.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and City of San Marcos. As she stated before, this is the Fifth Annual of the Harvey Miller Day of Service. You probably wonder, what is that? Actually, what we do, we focus on the Dunbar neighborhood to actually do a cleanup. We do partner with the city, and I'm gonna let her spelling that to her, that we actually start, we'll be starting at the Eddie Durn Park, going toward the city, toward Dunbar, going up the streets of MLK, Center Street, and Valley, cleaning up, picking up, and making sure we do what trash. We also, we partner with the food bank, so we will have a food bank truck there, so if you can, come, join us. If not, please feel free to come and make a donation. And this, like I said, is the Harvey Miller Fifth Annual Day of Service.
Hi. Amy Tamaides with Keeps San Marcos Beautiful. We're proud to have partnered with the Harvey Miller Day of Service and the Dunbar Heritage Association on this cleanup. The first Saturday of every month, we do a litter cleanup, and to have something special and recognized for this November cleanup is a treat for us, and we look forward to having, I will say, there's probably at least a hundred or so people at this cleanup when we're walking through the streets of Dunbar. So if you want to come join us, please do.
So thank you for that. So I think there's gonna be some, probably some fun going on in addition to, in addition to a cleanup that will be appreciated by many. A proclamation. Whereas Texas is home to nearly 5,000 native plant species, recognized as plants that had evolved here naturally before European settlers arrived, plants that thrive in particular ecosystems without direct or indirect human interventions. And whereas founded in 1981, the Native Plant Society of Texas has expanded its outreach with over 30 chapters to promote the conservation, research, and utilization of native plants and plant habitats of Texas through education, outreach, and example. And whereas the Texas Native Plant Week began with the vision of Fay Testnow and Barbara Anderson, two members of the Highland Lakes Chapter, who led the effort to push the proclamation to the Texas Legislature, and it became law on September 1st of 2009. And whereas native plants conserve water, provide habitats for birds, wildlife, and butterflies, protect the soil with long root systems, eliminate or reduce pollutants and the need for herbicides and other chemical inputs, and whereas habitat loss and fragmentation, limited water for environmental flows, invasive species, and climate change are some of the major challenges to conservation and biodiversity in Texas according to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. And whereas founded in 2017, the Texas Hill Country Chapter of the Native Plant Society of Texas uses various in-person and online platforms to advocate and educate the public about native plants, organizes field trips and guided nature hikes within Hayes County, manages plant lists and databases, and partners with various allied groups throughout the year. And whereas conservation organizations in San Marcos, including the San Marcos Discovery Center, the San Marcos River Foundation, the San Marcos Green Belt Alliance, the Meadow Center for Water and the Environment, and the Mermaid Society, work to promote stewardship of our natural resources. And whereas homeowners, homeowner associations, landscapers, and local policymakers can help protect ecosystems, benefit wildlife, birds, and the insects they need to survive by selecting native plants when making their landscaping decisions. And whereas this annual celebration during the third full week of October is a reminder that everyone has a role to play to preserve our native landscape for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 19th through the 25th of 2025 as Texas Native Plant Week, and do hereby call upon the residents of San Marcos to join us in recognizing the importance native plants play in the ecosystem to promote wildlife, pollination, and combat soil erosion. So thank you for bringing this to us, for this educational opportunity, and it's very important, so thank you.
It is. Thank you for doing this for us. We appreciate the public support. We know that everybody out there is catching on. We know that everybody out there is catching on because we're seeing more and more questions and people showing up at HEB to buy their native plants now, which has started in the last couple of years, and it's just pretty exciting, so we're glad you're all on board.
So San Marcos is a mayor's monarch champion city, a bird city, bee city, scenic city, all of those are, need our native plants, and so we would like to encourage everybody also to plant with native plants. We have a certified habitat stewardship program that helps residents have native plantings and to make it as a certified, so people can see it as an example. Also, our downtown plantings are turning into, is going all native, so if you want to see some good examples, we have it all around downtown.
And there are two plant sales every year. A proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, and rural areas, including San Marcos. And whereas community planning and plans like the Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan, the Downtown Plan, Neighborhood Area Plans, and the Historic Preservation Plan can help manage and direct this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and is endorsed by the American Planning Association. And whereas the success of community planning depends on public officials and citizens who understand support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the American Planning Association Texas Chapter has recognized the City of San Marcos with 2025 Planning Achievement Awards, acknowledging outstanding planning documents and training efforts. And whereas these honors include the Comprehensive Plan Gold Award for the Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan, the Environmental Planning Gold Award for the Blanco Gardens Neighborhood Area Plan, and the Richard R. Lilly FAICP Planning Excellence Award. And whereas we recognize the dedication of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustments, and the many citizen planners whose time and expertise improved San Marcos through active participation and planning initiatives. And whereas we further acknowledge the valuable contributions of the city's professional community planners and extend our sincere appreciation for their continued commitment to public service. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize the essential contributions of community planning to our quality of life and the future of San Marcos, and to get involved in many of the ongoing plans, including the Historic Preservation Plan and numerous Neighborhood Area Plans currently in progress. Congratulations on the awards. I don't mean to sound surprised, but congratulations on these awards. So, and for what y'all do every day, thank you commissioners for your volunteer service. So this is fantastic, great recognition for you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. October is to really acknowledge all of you all here, our staff, our boards and commissions, our policymakers who help direct and create the policies around planning, and so just want to recognize you all for all the work that you do. Also, it's a way for us to elevate all the things we have going on, which the mayor mentioned. We have our first ever Historic Preservation Plan, which is actually gonna be discussed tonight at work session. We are working on several different area plans. Last week, we had a big multi-day event on our South of Downtown Area Plan. Next week, we have a workshop for the North of Campus Area Plan, so we're doing a lot in the community, as well as other divisions, with our title workshops coming up and some of our home rehabilitation applications as well. And then the last thing I'll mention is, as the mayor discussed, we're receiving an award this week for the Comprehensive Plan and our first ever Neighborhood Area Plan for the City of San Marcos, which is really exciting. So we're happy to recognize some of those things and encourage everyone to get involved in all of the things that we have going on, so thank you so much.
A proclamation. Whereas code compliance officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens living in communities throughout the United States through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, environmental, property maintenance, and other codes and ordinances. And whereas code compliance officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible, caring individuals serving our community with a commitment to promoting life, health, and safety in the course of their daily jobs. And whereas the City of San Marcos Code Compliance Officers have an 83% voluntary compliance rate, and whereas the City of San Marcos has an opportunity to highlight the contributions these dedicated individuals make in partnering with our neighborhoods and community to enhance our daily quality of life. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Code Compliance Month, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos, its communities and neighborhoods, to join me in expressing appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by our code compliance officers as they provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the entire community. Thank y'all for what you do and for the kind and caring heart with which you do it.
I gave my speech time to plannings, so.
All right. Okay. We'll let the photos go ahead.
Mayor, can I get you on this side this time? Sorry. Okay. Looking this way, these spots, one, two, three. One, two, three, couple more. Two, and. You got it? Thank y'all.
Whereas on October 28th of 1886, the United States of America gratefully accepted the gift of the Statue of Liberty from the people of France, a symbol of friendship between two nations united by shared ideas, ideals of freedom, democracy, and human dignity. And whereas conceived in the years following the American Civil War and inspired in part by the Centennial of the Declaration of Independence in 1876, the Statue of Liberty stands as a monument to liberty, justice, and equality, and is a tribute to the abolition of slavery and the enduring struggle to extend freedom to all. And whereas designed by Frederick August Bartholdy and engineered by Gustav Eiffel, the Statue of Liberty enlightening the world rises upon Bedlo's Island, now Liberty Island, and New York Harbor, holding a tablet inscribed with the date of the Declaration of Independence, July 4th, 1776, and standing over broken chains that symbolize the end of human bondage. And whereas from the late 19th century through the 20th, Lady Liberty became the first site of America for millions of immigrants, her torch envisaged offering courage, hope, and a promise of new beginnings to all who arrived upon these shores. And whereas on the day of her dedication, President Grover Cleveland presided over the ceremonies, declaring the statue a lasting symbol of the principles of liberty, democracy, and human rights, and committing the nation to the preservation of these ideals for all generations. And whereas beyond her historic role as a welcoming figure, the Statue of Liberty has become a global emblem of the principles enshrined in the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Reconstruction Amendments, reminding us that, I'm sorry, Reconstruction Amendments, reminding us that liberty, equality, and justice are responsibilities to be upheld by each generation. And whereas in this present age, the Statue of Liberty continues to serve as both a monument of remembrance and a call to action, summoning all people to preserve the freedoms she represents and to extend them more fully to all. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 28th day of October 2025 as Statue of Liberty Day, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to reflect with gratitude upon the history of this cherished moment, to honor the sacrifices that ended slavery, to celebrate the centennial spirit of the Declaration of Independence, to recognize the friendship between nations that brought it into being, to remember President Grover Cleveland's dedication of this enduring symbol, and to recommit ourselves to the ideals of liberty and justice which it so nobly represents. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Absolutely. The Texas Ranger Society, Children of the American Revolution, and the Texas Rangers Junior American Citizens Club are happy to bring to the citizens of San Marcos a celebration of the Statue of Liberty. We also encourage everyone to celebrate all of the activities that happened over the revolution. It's a 10-year period. We're going into the celebration of America's 250th years. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Let's do the same thing. Let's get you on this side this time.
Are you bouncing away at this point?
Yes. All right. Thanks, Miles. Ready, one, two, three. Last one, right. One, two, and. You got it? Thank you.
Thank you.
We all have the right number today.
Well, imagine any of the parts.
Oh, that would be up.
Is that in our show?
Well, could you do so, or are you maybe sitting in the door?
Did you go up here?
I'll have a photo.
Are we all still?
If you want to be in the photo.
Come on.
Yeah. You nominated, then. Come on.
I'll take the pictures.
I'm sorry.
All right.
A proclamation. Whereas Larry Patterson, a veteran of the Vietnam War, joined the San Marcos community in 1980 as an associate professor at then Southwest Texas State University. In 1983, he was promoted to professor and asked to chair the Department of Management and Marketing. Larry served his chair through the '88-'89 academic year, retired from the university in 2005 as a distinguished professor emeritus of marketing. And whereas his community service began over 10 years ago when he started volunteering for Meals on Wheels with his wife Kathy. Around the same time, the two of them also began volunteering with the Court Appointed Special Advocates of Central Texas, which provides advocacy for children in the foster system. Although Kathy passed away in 2021, Larry continues to volunteer for both programs to this day. And whereas Larry also volunteers with the United Methodist Church on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month when the church partners with the Hayes County Food Bank to provide food for those in the community who are in need. And whereas Larry also served as a tutor for America Reads for the past two years. It was his volunteer work in this program that prompted Patricia Buckley, interim Director of RSVP of South Central Texas, to nominate Larry for the Outstanding Senior Citizen Volunteer Award. And whereas according to Patricia, from his first day in training, he came in enthusiastic to help. He volunteers at Travis Elementary, which is the same school where his late wife Kathy taught for 25 years. There, he is well-known, cooperative, flexible, and very impactful. Larry works with students from K through 3rd grade to practice reading skills every week. Students enjoy their time with him, and their test scores improve dramatically. And whereas not only do the students improve academically, but they learn to have confidence in their abilities. Often, the students do not have male role models at home, and Larry serves this purpose by basically becoming like a surrogate grandparent. According to Patricia, Larry's impact in the community is invaluable, as these students will go on to succeed academically and become productive members of the San Marcos community. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 21st day of October 2025 as Outstanding Senior Citizen Volunteer Award Larry Patterson Day, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize the exemplary work and hours that Larry volunteers to make San Marcos the best place in which to live. So thank you. Who is anyone speaking?
We're just the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission for the city, and we have some of our members here today, and also Ginny Lewis is one of our past honorees, so we're glad that she's here with us today. And Nick, Rialti is our city advisor for our group. Thank you.
And I see that Nick has brought off the wall the Activity Center, the plaque that Larry's name has been added to, and I see that there is a lovely gift of recognition also. Then we're just gonna celebrate Larry.
Let's get a quick, let's get a couple of photos there. Can we have you, can you take a step down and front, center?
Right front. Okay. There you go.
There we go. Couple steps over to your left, and everyone can kind of come up to the edge of the top there. There we go. And then we're looking right here first. We're gonna get a few photos right here. Okay. Okay, then a couple of mine. Here we go. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Two, three, last one. Two, and, three. We got it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can exit this way.
Thank you.
Thanks, lady. Good job.
Congratulations.
I can make it.
You were just worried now.
More fun.
Yes, I do. Yes, and I do.
Congratulations.
Okay.
A proclamation. Whereas every person in his or her lifetime will experience the loss of a friend or family member, and whereas Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead, is a traditional cultural holiday that has been celebrated throughout the world for hundreds of years. And whereas Dia de los Muertos does not celebrate death, but rather is a rejoicing and celebration of life, and is seen as a time of renewal and remembrance, when our family and friends who have died are remembered on this special day. And whereas the late Dr. James Jim Garber has been selected as the 2025 Dia de los Muertos 5K Honoree for his many contributions to the San Marcos community. As an anthropology professor, he taught at Texas State University for many years, inspiring thousands of students. He authored several books and many articles about the ancient Maya people of Belize Valley, where he conducted years of research. He was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and a tireless advocate dedicated to helping preserve the uniqueness and beauty of San Marcos. He volunteered as a scout master. He was beloved by his family and friends. Throughout his life of service to others, he was an inspiration for us all. Whereas the 12th Annual Dia de los Muertos 5K Run Walk and Kids Fun Run will take place on Saturday, October 25th of 2025, at Hernandez Elementary School in San Marcos, with proceeds going to the Johnny T. Rosales Memorial Scholarship Nonprofit Organization. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 25th day of October 2025 as Dia de los Muertos 5K Day, and do hereby call upon the persons of the San Marcos community to take time to honor the memory of our beloved family and friends and to support this annual community event. Thank y'all for bringing this to us and for this celebration every year, and may I say, excellent choice on your honoree this year. Anyone speaking?
Thank you. My name's Celia Rosales, and behind us, we have our Dia de los Muertos Planning Group. First, I'd like to introduce the family of Dr. James Garber, Mrs. Melissa Garber, his daughter Chamberlain.
the uniqueness and beauty of San Marcos. He volunteered as a scoutmaster. He was beloved by his family and friends. Throughout his life of service to others, he was an inspiration for us all. Whereas the twelfth annual Dia de los Muertos 5K Run Walk and Kids Fun Run will take place on Saturday, October twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-five at Hernandez Elementary School in San Marcos, with proceeds going to the Johnny T. Rosales Memorial Scholarship Nonprofit Organization. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the twenty-fifth day of October two thousand and twenty-five as Dia de los Muertos 5K Day, and do hereby call upon the persons of the San Marcos community to take time to honor the memory of our beloved family and friends and to support this annual community event. Thank y'all for bringing this to us and for this celebration every year. And may I say excellent choice on your honoree this year.
Thank you. My name's Celia Rosales. And behind us, we have our Dia de los Muertos Planning Group. First, I'd like to introduce the family of Dr. James Garber, Mrs. Melissa Garber, his daughter Chamberlain, Zachary and Greg, Rebecca Monzanares, Cheryl and Joe Lucio, Sylvia Cruz, Johnny Rosales, Elsie Romano. And a little emotional. Some people talk about being good men, and some people are good men, and he was a good man. And that's what I'm going to say. It's, yeah. Thank you. Everybody is invited to join us for a butterfly release here in a few minutes. After the proclamations, we will gather out in the front. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is, this is one for you, right?
Oh, you're right. That is one for me. Okay. Who's being pinned? I'll stand. I'll, I'll, I'll stand right, right there. Okay. Jim's going to come.
Mayor, it's good to see you. Okay, perfect. Firefighter Stephen Ramirez here. He was hired on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. And he has successfully completed his one-year probationary period, which was March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So congratulations to Stephen and.
All right. I, Stephen Ramirez.
I, Stephen Ramirez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of firefighter, paramedic.
The duties of firefighter, paramedic.
For the City of San Marcos.
For the City of San Marcos.
Hayes County.
Hayes County.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, firefighter. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations, Mike.
I did.
You have a photo that y'all want while we're here? You guys have a question?
Let's stay up there. All right. Can everybody see me?
Where the world's kids stare us.
All right. Everybody looking this way. Vicks Miles former. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Two more. One, two, and three. We got it.